We'll begin with the salute to the flag, please. Thank you, Mrs. Pollan.
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Brasky?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Dent?
Here.
Mr. Rocco?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Gray is getting the public comment sign-in sheet. Thank you. Okay, on the resident's sign-in sheet, Lane Matthews? Make sure you talk, is the microphone on?
Sorry, we're still taking off.
It doesn't sound like it's on.
It is on?
Does it sound like it's on?
We're trying, I don't know if the microphone's on or not.
There is no.
Pete, can you check it?
It is not.
Yeah, well, it has to be recorded, that's why. It doesn't sound like it's on. No.
You're not paying?
Oh, there you go. He's a magic touch. Alright, thank you, sorry about that.
Alright. I'm opposed to Elcon's building here. First, I'd like to say that I attended the meeting at the Levittown Public Library, and the one pro-Elcon individual there accused those opposed to Elcon of being nimby's, meaning not in my backyard. And the term nimby is most often derogatory and perjorative. Anyone using that term to describe this situation must be a self-serving bully, and I'll tell you why I think that. It's because we already have accepted and live with two major threats to our community's environment, and they're in our own backyard. Grows massive and expanding landfill and the wheel operator incinerator, which has a record of fines and penalties derived from violations of environmental protection laws. We know it's happened, and we can assume it will happen again. We live with that each and every day. EPA may mean well, but our lungs and veins can't be cleansed by the issuance of violations or the collections of fines and penalties. It's not all about money, and it's bigger than jobs. We've already taken more than our fair share, willingly or not, of our nation's problem of solid waste disposal. Residents of the townships of Falls, Bristol, and Lower Makefield shouldn't be subjected to the burden of an unfair share of the nation's toxic materials disposal problem, and we shouldn't have to face the disproportionate share of potentially harmful physical and economic consequences from an industry who's shown a lax regard for safety over profit. Our areas already polluted, and our elected officials should be looking out for us. They should in no way be considering allowing any further threat to our already threatened health and well-being. I have two family members who've developed asthma within the past 10 years. Asthma's on the rise, so is thyroid cancer. If you just Google hazardous waste accidents or waste disposal disasters, the page fills with documented proof that proverbial-
Excuse me. You have to watch your mouth, please.
Okay. There's more than enough criteria for this board to vote no on the Elcon proposal. This is our home, we do not want to live on a literal dumping ground. Our burden should not be permitted to get worse. Please vote no. Thank you.
John Estock?
Boy, I know everybody up there, I voted for everybody. Rocco, you're here tonight.
I am, yes I am.
God bless you. I voted, I was gonna get you impeached a little bit. Let me tell you, I'm an 85-year-old man, I've been in Falls Township for over 60 years, and I got a no-impact home-based business in my neighborhood, which is a landscape. I got a guy with two trailers, two trucks, three cutting machines, and big snowplow. Mr. Gray told me first time that he couldn't do it. Mr. Bennett called me up and rang my ears and said he can put whatever he wants in the neighborhood. Now, I've got this sheet that was picked up the other day, and it tells me nothing about the landscape business here. Tells me you can put it in your house for 25 feet or 25 cubic yards to stay, nothing about putting equipment in here.
I'm sorry, what's the sheet? I'm sorry, what is the sheet you have, you're referencing?
No-impact home-based-
Oh, okay, alright, I wasn't sure what-
Is that the only thing I ever got? Is that the only thing they got? That's why I asked for something?
Okay, so that's the definition you found. Yeah, well, off the top of my head, I can't tell you what the zoning says for what a no-impact home-based business is. But certainly, we have to take a look, if he's got, if he's storing equipment there, I mean, assuming there has to be some kind of limit on how much he can have, if he's got covered sheds or things of that nature, it might be over the impervious surface allowance. Obviously, I don't know-
Are they stored in the street?
Come on.
Are they stored in the street?
He puts it wherever he wants it. You know my neighborhood?
Yes, we just had his house last week.
Yeah, we came to your house to check on your lack of-
Come in and stop in and see me.
No, we didn't. We looked at the house next to you.
Jeff, I know, he stops next door, but at least something like that. He could've told me you're back from working again, I could've-
Do you know what house he's telling you?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Some winding way.
Steve Rooney. And the only thing I can tell you, he went to school with Mr. Bennett, and I don't know Mr. Bennett's first name or who Mr. Bennett is, but he remade a riot act out. If I wasn't to be so nice, I'd run down here and punch him out.
I believe you.
Okay.
I know.
I'm a ball-card Teamster holder, so I don't take no lip, and I don't give you no lip, and you know that. My wife, when she sees you coming to the riot aid, what she said, "Don't talk to him."
Well, yeah, we'll definitely-
Hey, listen, I'm gonna tell you one thing. See what you're gonna do, if I see stuff you're gonna be moving in next week, I'm gonna come back and get you. And I'm gonna be, you got the $15 million put away that you got back from Debbie de Blasio?
What, $15 million from?
That you guys transferred back and forth there, it was in the paper a few months back?
Yes, we did.
Oh, for TOFA?
Yeah.
When we went TOFA, yeah, they paid us back.
Okay, hold on to it, I might come back and get it off you.
Okay. Okay.
Don't go away, if I'm Hungarian, I'm a gypsy, I can tell you anything. Now, what else you wanna know?
Well, if we know the address?
Yeah, we know the address.
And what the complaint is? Alright, we can certainly, yeah, we'll have to look up, we'll take a look at the definition and find out if he's, if they're violating it, and just making sure they're-
We'll have the police swing by and make sure everything's legal, too.
Yeah.
I hope so.
So, I mean, everything has to, all the vehicles have to be registered, everything has to be, yeah, so, and storage, too, if he's got, if he's got, you know, fuel there, if it has to be stored properly, it can be fired-
He makes sure as he gets aggravating, he sees a pain in the butt. And I'm not allowed to punch him out, so I gotta come down-
Yeah, don't do that.
And my wife says, "Be customary, Johnny, be nice."
Alright, well, I apologize for you having the difficulty.
That's fine, that's fine.
But, yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Because maybe I'll tell my wife, she can talk to you next time.
Okay, alright.
Okay, no kidding, but don't wunk it around. You gonna do something for me?
Yes.
Jeff, well, I know, I appreciate it. And Mr. Rocco, nice seeing you again.
Good to see you, as always.
I'll go and watch the basketball game.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, those are all the names on the resident's sign-in sheet. Any other residents who wish to speak? See one hand to the back? Sure.
Hey, can I tell you something real fast? Were you playing, were you dancing over Bill Victoria? Saturday night, I've been, was training there, we had a home break-in. A 90-year-old woman, two people, beat her up badly, punched her around, made her face big, tied a cord around her neck to her ankle, threw her down the cellar steps, broke her spleen, broke her ribs, and she's still with her.
Well, God bless her.
When was this?
Up on West Trenton, right about this school, right across-
Oh, in Jersey?
Oh, in Jersey, yeah, okay.
When he was prepared to do his dancing over the-
No, I know, I know. I hope you're not making fun of my dancing.
I'll return UPS driver, by the way. I nailed five bonuses for stealing. Rocco, pretty good eyes.
I know. Thank you, Mr. Estock. I'm sorry, just have your name and address, that's all.
Hi, my name's David Deegan, I live in 59 Pleasant Lane, Levittown, Pennsylvania. I've been there for about 20 years, and I was here to talk about Elcon. And when I first heard about it, the increased, I was against the increased garbage being over there, since we already have enough, and sometimes this smell, the odor comes over, so initially, I was just against it. And then I started reading some of the stats about the 18 to 25 trucks, truckloads a day, coming down 13, and Route 13 has already had enough problems without adding that amount of trucks. And then I found out it was a half-mile from the river, from our drinking water, where they're gonna treat this water. And that got me more concerned, I went to an informational meeting and handed out flyers and things like that, and learned about it, that they're past Phase 1, and they're coming up on Phase 2 with the DEP. And, I mean, if it is possible that they pass Phase 2, because they had, they keep resubmitting for Phase 1 to finally get past Phase 1, if they get past Phase 2, just some stats to consider that I got from different websites, which I believe to be true. Elcon would annually treat 210,000 tons of raw hazardous waste, including mercury, lead, and cadmium. Incineration would produce 39 tons of air emissions containing pollutants such as hydrochloric acid and nitrous oxide that could make their way to areas of Mercer County and border town environmentalists have reported. So, if those stats are true, and even with a 99% guarantee of safety, that's 2,100 tons of water, waste in our water, and 62 tanker-truck accidents a year. That's, if you do your numbers, that's at a 99% guarantee, which I think is what Elcon gives now, because they can't give 100% guarantee. So, I just wanted, just as a resident, I just hope that you oppose this passing. I don't know how much influence you have, and also if it's possible to sell, for US Steel to sell the land to something that's more environmentally safe, rather than a company like Elcon, or a company in the future, that would, you know, just use it for waste. Like the person before me said, you know, "We're just tired of living at the dump," you know?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other residents? Okay, move to non-residents. Madeline Jones?
Good evening, Madeline Jones. Non-resident of Falls Township, my first time saying this in 40-some years. I'm now a Morrisville Borough resident, but hopefully, I'm still welcome back. And I, my first night back in a long, long time, and I appreciate you having this on a Monday night, because Tuesday, Thursday nights I work, so this is good. And I noticed there's no names of our members on the site, their name tags, their nameplates.
I guess we, at this point, they're pretty much the same cast of characters as we've had for a while.
Good terminology, very good. First of all, I want to thank those who came out tonight, for whatever reason, and I, myself, have been listening to a lot of negative comments about Elcon. Actually, attended information meeting for a while, bits and pieces I've been picking up, and it's not good for the township. It's not good anywhere. And, yes, Falls Township, first and finest. We can always say Falls Township is the first, but are we losing the term, the word "finest", no matter if it applies to whatever area in the township? I don't think we want to do that. April is Earth Day, awareness, in a few weeks, and it's also, you can type in "noise pollution," please, "noise pollution," you'll come up with "Noise Awareness Day," toward the end of the month, around the same time. And, what brought me here, because I actually, when I just moved recently, I had a whole box, State Store box, with material on noise pollution, and yes, other types of pollution. But I had to downsize, so one of the things I came across is this, and I'd love the camera can come in close with this, for those who are here, if you can make it out. But many, many, many months ago, about a year or so ago, I remember one of the meetings talking about parking on grass slots, you know, homeowners parking their cars, family cars, whatever the situation may be, for the necessity at this time of, at this time in our lives. And I can remember, at the same time, if I'm correct, that I kept saying, asking, "Why are we parking on the sidewalks? Why are we parking and having our mirrors and fenders and doors and everything else on a vehicle parked over the apron, or saddled over a walkway? I don't care if it's on Trenton Road, whatever," and it's not just Falls Township. A lot of the townships and boroughs, people are parking anywhere, and no one's doing anything about it, to my knowledge. I mean, yes, this is obscene with Earth Day, we don't want anything like this, and this is, this is environmental, but I'm trying to promote health and safety, which should be an override of environmental sometimes. So, please, what can we do to get out and get the cars off the sidewalks, off the aprons, and park legally and safely, and yet convenient for whatever their needs are? So, okay, thank you for listening, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. And just so you know, Madeline, it is illegal to block sidewalks, so cars that are parked on sidewalks, or any kind of blocking of sidewalks is something you can be cited for. So, it's just a matter of, you know, alerting code enforcement or to go out and see it, because again, it is obviously 35,000 people, and I forget how many thousands, tens of thousands of houses, it's, you know, our guys can't see everything, so it's a matter of, you know, people calling, and we can go out and take care of it, or try to, anyway.
And I appreciate that, and I know Mr. Harvey, over the course of time, and I, you know, I just kinda leave it in my thoughts and prayers, whatever, for somebody else to kind of say, "Hey, you see this, why don't you do something?" Because I used to be on the phone with Tom Bennett and the township over the course of time, you know, take house numbers down and everything, but I think other folks have to step up when we see something not correct. And even parking in front of a strip mall? To run in, oh, I'll be in for 20 seconds, a minute, and folks parked there with their cars running in front of ramps. They're healthier than perhaps a lot of us here. So, that's also, if we see something like that, that should not be, it's a fire hazard, and they should not be parking there.
Sure.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, any of the non-residents wish to speak? See no hands. Alright, move on to item 2. Consider enactment of ordinance authorizing incurrence of lease rental debt by the township in the amount of $3,026,000, the township's guarantee, of the Township of Falls authorities' guaranteed water and sewer revenue bond, Series 2016, which is being issued to finance various capital projects. That's a lot. Ms. Gallagher, want to just give us a rundown on what exactly that means, putting it in regular terms?
Certainly, and I believe that there are individuals from TOFA, as well as TOFA's Bond Counsel here this evening, that can answer some additional questions. But this is an ordinance that would allow TOFA to borrow money using the township's guarantee, and to improve the rate that they're able to get. As you know, the township created TOFA several years ago, or I think recreated TOFA several years ago, so TOFA is responsible for borrowing money as needed to maintain its system and continue to expand its system. But this is very standard practice, that the creating municipality uses the backing of its guarantee to, so that the municipal authority can borrow money.
So essentially, sort of, you know, we're guaranteeing their loan.
Correct.
Now, what would happen if they loaned the money and we weren't the guarantor, and they defaulted? Who would end up having to pay?
As far as I know, it's not heard of, that the creating municipality does not guarantee a loan, but even if that were the case, we would still be on the hook for insuring them.
Yeah, that's the thing, even if, even if you don't guarantee it, because it's the Township of Falls Authority, we would still, it's still a part of this government, so therefore, we'd still be paying anyway. So, it really is just a matter of, it's a formality, really. And I, you know, I did see a couple of members of the TOFA Board, as well as some people they have with them, some employees, some staff, so I don't know if they were interested in coming up, Mr. Rosso, Mr. Goodwin, as well as some of the, Mr. Bennings back there, too? Sure, sure.
So, over the past year, Anthony Rosso, TOFA Board? Over the past year, we've had water complaints, some of the areas down by South Olds, Beaumont, Chatham, that area, high iron, discolored water, all safe, but it's a nuisance. So, for the past year, we've been trying different routes, tried two pilot projects before the holidays, went really south, went bad, tried any other solutions that were more economical than either relining or replacing the piping. Right now, we have about 30,000, approximately 30,000 linear feet of cast iron in the system. So, based on the engineers' recommendations, we can push off half of the relining or replacement, and then the estimate came around $3 million for the first two sections that they think we should be doing sooner than later. Unfortunately, nothing cheaper, no better route to go, we've really tried, and the patients in that, the residents in that area have been very patient over the last year in having to deal with that nuisance. So, unfortunately, we don't have any other routes. Appreciate you guys supporting this, it'll help immensely with getting a better rate and giving a better, you know, product to our customers. Most recently, we had an increase to cover the costs, in addition to other costs, not the entire increase wasn't for this, but some of it was. That's about it. Any questions on?
Yeah, comments or questions from board members, either from Mr. Rosso, or Ms. Gallagher, or Mr. Gray, or-
Or our Bond Counsel, our engineer there, Tim, our Executive Director.
Yeah, Mr. Hartman's here, as well as, again, the professional staff. Mr. Galloway?
No, it just sounds like a necessary thing. Thank you.
Mr. Brasky?
How soon can we expect some results or work to start in that area?
So, that's good. Vanessa, what did we say at the last meeting? Within-
Within four weeks.
Four weeks, we're expecting it. So, once we get the contractor up on bidding and everything, we're gonna have, we're gonna notify the customers that are gonna be affected, we're gonna have a little meeting available for them to come out, we'll have the contractor there, the engineers, Tim, our Operations Manager, they'll explain what the customers can expect over the duration of the project.
I don't know if you said it or I missed it, but how many customers were affected now, do you know?
Tim, you have any idea on the general number?
Probably hard to tell.
There's less than 300 in the first section, the second section that we'll move on to is a little bit less than that, closer to 200, so we're talking about 500.
Mr. Hartman?
Yeah, so I was gonna repeat, yeah, I was just gonna repeat. So, Mr. Hartman's the Executive Director, so about, roughly 500 customers is what you're saying? In the two sects, households, in the two sections, okay. Alright. Alright. And so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I guess the point to it was, is how many of those households will be taken care of with the loan? All of them?
Every one of those, yes.
Okay, good.
Of the first two sections?
Yes.
Yeah, and then after this, once this project gets completed, this loan gets paid back, we're gonna take care of the remaining, and we'll have to, you know, get another loan for that, but we can, we can push that off a little, so there's no reason to incur the extra expense on those finance fees, if we can push off it.
And what's the timeline on that, on repaying this loan?
Well, we, right now, it's a 10-year loan. We're not getting the whole, the whole sum, it's sort of like a home equity loan.
Okay, like a line, yeah.
As you get it, you pay for it.
There's no penalty for paying it back early, and we hope to do that.
Okay, it's like a line of credit, almost, really.
Really a line of credit, we got an exceptional rate with your guys' backing, and it seems like a really, unfortunately, like Mr. Galloway said, it's a necessary evil.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Dent, anything else?
That's all.
Mr. Rocco?
So, I'm guessing that the cast iron's 50-plus years old, as old as the, yeah.
Yeah, so if we replace the pipes, the estimate for the same amount of area would have been close to 4.5 million. The engineers tell us for the $3 million, which is about 2/3 of the replacement, we should get about 50 years' life out of it as well, so it's an easy decision.
Absolutely, yeah. Alright, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay. Alright, and I'm assuming that you're choosing the areas that 500 customers are the ones where you've had the most problems, I guess, or the most serious problems?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, alright.
So, let me just add in, so we have where our system puts in the iron levels as well, and then there's lower bucks who we get our water from.
Right.
So, we're monitoring those areas, those interconnection points, too, because the numbers aren't coming in zero at those points.
Right.
So, this is gonna do, you know, a heck of a lot for these folks, but as we continue, it's not gonna be perfect.
Right. Yeah, and I think that's an important point, you know, the Township of Falls Authority is different from a lot of other water authorities, because it's essential, but it's called a conveyance system. The Township of Falls doesn't have a facility on the Delaware that pulls in water and treats it, and then pumps it out. TOFA essentially buys water from Lower Bucks Joint, or Marsville, or somebody, and then it goes through our pipes and pump stations and everything, and it goes to people's houses. And the same thing happens going the other way with the sewer. Essentially, you know, it's our pipes that carry it, our pump stations, lift stations that carry it and move it, but then it gets sent to Lower Bucks Joint, or Marsville, or Big Bucks, or somewhere, where they're the ones who actually do the treatment. And so, you know, TOFA has always been, it's always been that way, TOFA's always been sort of at the-
Mercy.
At the mercy, yeah, right. At the mercy of those other companies. If those other places decide to raise their rates, well, you know, TOFA doesn't really have a choice, they have to pay it, and so they have to pass on those added expenses to the customers. So, and that's what, you know, Mr. Rosso's saying, that, you know, the water that's coming in from these other services isn't coming in 100% crystal clear. It's coming in within, you know, the safety limits, safe limits, and like you're saying, it certainly doesn't look good, but, you know, in terms of health, it doesn't, it doesn't have the, doesn't, isn't as bad as it looks, I guess, maybe is the best way of putting it. And so, TOFA's doing the best they can, trying to find a solution to the problem, and spending money economically, knowing that, you know, at some, at any point in time, you know, tonight, you know, one of those providing services or other utilities could decide to raise rates with no, you know, input from us at all, from TOFA at all. So, so I appreciate the time you put into it, and I know it's been frustrating, I'm sure, to try and help the people that you're trying to help, and it's a good board we have, and it's good people who work at TOFA, so, you know, I don't think he's got any problem with us supporting this. Any other comments or questions?
No, no. Thank you.
Okay. So, any public comment? See no hands. Alright, so this will be an ordinance, Mr. or Ms. Galloway?
Again, thanks a lot, guys.
Sure, thank you.
Just by way of clarification, the ordinance does reference a bond, and there was some comments regarding this being a bank loan. This is a bank loan, but it's a bond issued to and owned by the bank, so it's structured as a bank loan, just to clarify the motion.
Alright, and this will be ordinance-
16-4.
16-4. Alright, is there a motion then to approve ordinance 16-4 guaranteeing the $3,026,000 loan to the Township of Falls Authority?
So moved?
Very good.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Alright, item 3 is consider private sanitary sewer maintenance agreement between Falls Township and Buckingham Retail Properties LLC. Ms. Gallagher, back to you.
Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. This is an agreement that the DEP is requiring for any property that uses a, what's called a grinder pump, to transport the sewage from its property to the township's sewer collection facilities. This actually is a tri-party agreement between the Township, the Township of Falls Authority, and Buckingham Retail. This is related to the Rite Aid project that the board approved a few months back. TOFA has, TOFA's attorney has reviewed the agreement, as has the attorney for Buckingham Retail, and we've reviewed it and found it in a form acceptable for adoption.
Okay. So, comments or questions for Ms. Gallagher? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
No questions.
Dent? Mr. Rocco?
I have none.
No? Any public comments? Okay. Alright, then, is there a motion to adopt the agreement with Buckingham Retail? Okay. All right, then, is there a motion to adopt the agreement with Buckingham Retail with regards to the sewer maintenance, sewer maintenance program?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 4, consider landscaping bids at township facilities for 2016 with options for 2017 and 2018. Mr. Gray?
On Thursday, March 24th, township representatives opened sealed bids for landscaping services on township properties for the year 2016, with options for years 2017 and 2018. The results were WDB Lawn and Garden for 2016, $21,575; 2017, $21,575; and 2018, $22,178. The second company was Greenscape Landscape Contractor. All three years were $25,900 each. Based on the bid results, WDB Lawn and Garden is the lowest responsive bidder for each of the three years. The board is asked to consider WDB Lawn and Garden for landscaping services at Falls Township properties contingent on securing a Falls Township business license and an outstanding insurance requirement.
Okay. All right, comments or questions for, from board members? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brasky?
I just want to thank everybody involved for taking the opportunity to try to extend the contract out for the three years. I know this WDB has been here for a couple of years now, and seems to do a good job, and I think the Public Works would agree, they do a good job working with them, so I'm glad to see his, you know, he's got the option here for a three-year deal.
Okay. Mr. Dents?
How much did we pay last year?
Last year, we paid $20,925. Thank you, that's all.
I have none.
No? Okay. Any public comment? Seen no hands. All right, so is it the interest of the board to go ahead with three years? I mean, obviously, we could do one, we could do two, I just...
What if we have to change something next year?
So it would depend on what have to be changed. We had the bid specs drafted so that if it's a unit of mulch, or a unit of flour, or something to that effect, we can change that very easily. If we're adding a new area of the township that is going to be a large area, it may require going back out to bid. If it's a small project, earlier we were talking about if we have a township on the sign, it's going to cost us a couple thousand dollars, we probably won't have to go back out to bid to that. But if we're adding something like a new park, we would...
Yep.
All right, yeah, that was a question I had brought up earlier, was, you know, the ability to sort of make minor modifications to this, or is this sort of lock us into a point? It seems, you know, as Ms. Gallagher said, the way this is written, if it's just a minor adjustment here and there, you know, putting in, you know, 20 flats of flowers instead of 15 flats of flowers, that's relatively simple to do. It's already in a unit cost format, so...
Correct.
Compared to, you know, as Ms. Gallagher said, you know, if we're going to build a brand-new park, you know, that'd be different, but I don't really think we're looking to necessarily do that in the next three years. So, so, is there any, so is there, do we, should we go ahead with WDB? Oh, another question, sorry. What if, and Mr. Brasky's right, that we've had a lot of, a lot of good experiences with WDB for the past couple of years, if, for some reason, you know, they're good, they're good this year, they're good next year, or maybe they're not as good next year, and there's some major problems, are we locked in to use them a third year, anyway?
The contract will be drafted in a way that if they're not performing satisfactorily, we'd be able to cancel and get, and go back out to bid after the first year.
Okay. I mean, I don't think they will. Like you said, you've done a good job, but...
Yeah.
Right, the important part for the township would be to document any, any issues.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Sullivan, you wrote the bid specs?
I did not.
Oh, okay.
Does that make you more in favor of doing it now?
No.
They were drafted by, I believe, Mr. Arnayo, in combination with my office.
All right, so is there a bid then, or is there a, a motion then regarding the two bids for the landscaping?
Make a motion to award WDB Lawn and Garden for the 2016, 2017, and 2018 years.
Seconded.
Okay. Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay. All right, minutes from the March 21st meeting. Any comments or corrections?
Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Pollan.
Okay. Now, you abstain, you abstain, Mr. Rocco?
I do abstain.
All right. So is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want abstention?
Want abstention.
Okay, we don't have reason for an executive session. Manager, comment?
Yes, just one, um, tonight, Mr. Chairman. The following businesses were approved to open operations in Falls Township during the month of March. They are Calambos Machine and Tool, located at 225 Lincoln Highway; Gemini Plastic Storage, 201 Lower Marsville Road; Dr. Matthew Lieber, 81 Big Oak Road; The Honey Baked Ham Company, 636 Lincoln Highway; The Max of Fairless Hills, also at 636 Lincoln Highway; and The Dollar Tree at 457 South Oxford Valley Road. And that's all I have. Thank you.
That's a lot of new businesses this month.
Okay, thank you. And it's something we, coming out of the Live Here, Spend Here program that Mr. Dents started off, you know, last year, we decided to, we wanted to ask Mr. Gray to kind of advertise a little bit of some of the businesses that are coming into the township, just so people know. And obviously, there are more coming. We get, you know, reports kind of weekly of people that put in letters of intent to open up businesses, in some cases, going into existing spaces that have been vacated, in other instances, going into new areas. I mentioned before, because I see some, some questions on, on Facebook, so people asking about the, whatever's being built next to the Burger King on New Falls Road, it's going to be a credit union. The Fairless Hills Credit Union is moving to that location, so they're building a new facility there. That's in, that's barely in Falls. It's right on the, right on the border of Falls Township and Bristol Township. So that's what's going in there.
Mr. Gray, have you tried the honey ham yet? I have not, and I intend to very shortly.
Like on, like on the way home.
Yeah, right. He forgot about it until he just read it.
Okay, so that was it?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. All right, board comment. Mr. Rocco?
I have none. Thank you for a good meeting.
Mr. Dents?
Yes, we have a vacancy for an alternate on the zoning hearing board, and we have a letter from Mr. Scott Dioria to be appointed as the alternate. I've known Scott for a while now, and I think he'd be a great addition to that board. I know a few of you have spoken to him, so I'm going to make a motion to appoint Scott Dioria.
Resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution?
Right. 16...
-9.
16-9.
Yes.
Appointing him to the zoning hearing board alternate seat.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made. Seconded, any commoner questions? No?
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Dioria over the weekend, so I'm very comfortable having him appointed to that position. And I'm not sure what the remainder, is it maybe two years left or something? I'm not sure, but it's all right. But, all right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
That's all I have tonight.
All right, Mr. Brasky?
No comment.
And Mr. Galloway?
No comment, except that the Villanova game starts at 9 o'clock?
9:19.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Dents will be in bed. Okay, yeah, well, thank everybody for a good meeting. And, yeah, it's been relatively simple. There is, so there was one, one term that was made, a comment that was made in the public comment, just one word that we're going to be editing out. I'll ask the, our audio tech to edit that out before, before it goes out over the airwaves. Just put that out publicly, so there will be a silent spot there to cover that up. So other than that, thank everybody for coming out, and I want to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.